Good evening. Welcome to our City Council meeting for the first of the year. Happy, Happy New Year, Happy 2020. Call the meeting in order, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Ortega?
Here.
Mayor Portem Lauer?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Estes?
Here.
Councilmember Geek?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yeah.
Councilmember Applegate?
Here.
Seven members present.
Okay. I trust everyone had a good Christmas and, and New Years and holiday and glad to see everybody back and we're hoping for another really good year coming up, so let's go ahead and get started with our business. For 2020, here we go. Item four, presentations, we have none. Item four B, Board Commission Committee Appointments. Are you alright?
Okay.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, so you gotta say first. We're gonna do a commission appointment for, Planning Commission, we're gonna appoint a regular member.
Okay. I have to recuse myself because I know the person that's being appointed, so.
Okay, and do we have to take a motion or anything, or he can just recuse himself? Okay. Alright, and who's speaking about this one? Okay, sorry.
So, as Ms. Duncan was elected to City Council, that left a regular member vacancy on the Planning Commission. The vacancy was advertised in the Fountain Valley News for three consecutive weeks, at which point the city received one application from a Mr. Corey Applegate. Mr. Applegate was not able to attend tonight's meeting, so he did provide a written statement thanking City Council to consider, for considering his application based on his knowledge of building and construction and within the community. There were no other applications received for this application, or this appointment.
And is this the only position that's open right now?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, I think some of us already know Corey, mainly because of his dad, but he's been a part of some other organizations here in town that he, he does some volunteer work for, so. What would Council like to do with this appointment? Mr. Geek?
Move to approve Corey Applegate on the Planning Commission?
And Mr. Lauer?
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval, please vote.
I have six yes, motion carry.
Okay, thank you. Alright. We'll move on to item five, City Council General Requests and Announcements. I'll start with Ms. Duncan. If I need to come back to you, I can't, 'cause I kinda just came in, so.
The traffic is really heavy, so I don't know what's going on. I just want to report that on Thursday, December 19th, I attended the Fountain Valley-Kleenworth Coalition Meeting. They had over forty people at this meeting and one of the things that they did say that they will choose four hundred people randomly to participate and give blood and urine samples. So I did talk with Scott and asked him, you know, how can you get this information to the council meeting? So we'll see what happens with that. Saturday, December 21st, I attended the Blue and Red Santa at the Beckett Center. That was a great event held by our police department, it was wonderful. I enjoyed it, I could've stayed there the whole entire time, it was really great. And we are in the process of doing a, there would be a MLK event. I'm sure that some people got the flyer that was listed. It's coming up on Monday at one o'clock.
Where at?
It's Anthony.
Dean Fleischer Center.
What's that, Dean Fleischer? Okay. Okay.
So it should be posted, it was.
There's a thing on the front door, too.
Okay, so it's on the front door, so I'll send it out to the council members so that you know, 'cause it would be nice for the council to show up. We've had a lot of interest and a lot of calls today since it's been publicized since yesterday. 'Cause there's an event that's held at Colorado College and the tickets are sold out, so they're looking for places to go.
Okay. Alright, one o'clock at the Dean Fleischer Activity Center. Okay. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Mr. Geek, anything?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Applegate?
Nothing tonight.
Ms. Estes?
The Fountain Valley Historical Society had their first in their winter lecture series this last Saturday. Forty-six people were in attendance. We thank you for everybody that came out for that. Our next in the series will be February 8th over at the museum and the topic will be Part One of the Families of Fountain. So, and our city clerk's family will be represented that day, so I hope we all, see you all there. Two o'clock.
Alright, thank you. Mayor Portem, anything?
Yeah, tomorrow we'll be here at, from two to three thirty, there's a, what they're calling a stakeholders meeting, the first in a series of many stakeholders meetings. And I'll just kinda read briefly from what's going on here from the email that we got. The Fountain Creek Watershed Flood Control and Greenway District would like to invite you to participate in a meeting to discuss the Fountain Creek Corridor-Greenway Master Plan Project. The district has recently been awarded grants from GOCO and some others to identify the final alignment of the Front Range Trail from Colorado Springs to Pueblo, which is a forty-six mile stretch that encompasses some of the healthiest river corridor in Colorado and much of that is privately owned. Because of the private ownership, that introduces the need for a really, really robust stakeholder process. So they're gonna kick that off with a meeting tomorrow. THK Associates is our design engineering firm for the district for that particular project. They're gonna be presenting sort of their preliminary information to this point and then seeking feedback from the community and especially the, the property owners along that corridor. But the Fountain Creek District is pretty much the project manager of record for that entire forty-six mile stretch and trying to balance a trail that's gonna last fifteen to twenty years minimum with minimal maintenance and balance that with the rights of the property owners is, is the, the key thing that we're working on as the district right now, so. If you didn't see anything about that, on behalf of the district, I'll apologize for that. THK scheduled a meeting kind of at the last minute because they were trying to get as many of the property owners to say yes they'd be here as they could and they got the last one to say yes at the last minute. It'll be at two o'clock, from two to three thirty right here in council chambers tomorrow, so. If you didn't hear about that, feel free to come in and at least see what THK is gonna present as kind of a preliminary information about that. That's all I've got.
Okay, Ms. Thompson, anything?
Yeah, I'll do my best to be in two places at once. Dieter, the freeway is backed up and so everybody's dumping off onto eighty-five and it took, it took me almost thirty minutes to get here with a normal five-minute drive, so. Yeah, so hopefully it'll clear up pretty soon, 'cause you know how that is down here once that starts. Okay, the state has begun back last week. The legislators are back in session and so Scott and I listened to a CML web, webinar? Webinar? And, and that was very interesting. They talked about a lot of bills they don't necessarily have bill numbers for. And then Monday with PPACG, I'm on the legislative panel there. We had our first meeting and so PPACG has their own lobbyists that we hired last couple of years ago and she did have some bill numbers for us, so Greg, if you would pass these down. I went ahead and made up a short list of some of the things we're looking at yet. I think they said a hundred and seventy-five bills were dropped the first day. Each legislator can put in five bills, not counting any late bills. So this is just the tip of the iceberg, so hang on. If you hear of anything that sounds interesting nationally or statewide, please let me know and we can follow through on it. PPACG, our lobbyist, we follow up on five bills, have to do with military, air, water, transportation, and aging. So those are the bills we follow through there. However, starting this year, we're gonna be making a separate list of unfunded mandate bills that might not have anything to do with those five pillars, but they might have to do with municipalities or county governments, so we're gonna be watching out for those bills, too. We do have a sample letter we're putting together that I'm gonna bring the council at the latest, probably the next meeting, that we're trying to get every city and county government to put a letter to the state legislators talking about unfunded mandates, that they, they just really can't be coming down, that we don't have, we just don't have the money for them. There's at least one family leave bill that we're aware of and possibly a second one coming and so just a lot of stuff going on. So there's a summary for you, so I don't take a lot of time, but if you have any questions, send me an email, give me a call.
Give them an extra one?
I sure do. Yep. And be happy to answer any questions or research it and hang on. It's gonna be interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then also, if you've been up Mesa Ridge Parkway, you may have seen that the county has begun working on the pond restoring. Brandy, do you know anything about that? The... No, no. Right, the pond's right there off Mesa Ridge Parkway. You're not on.
Wilson Ponds?
Willow Springs Pond, yeah. So if you go there, you're not gonna be able to hike around there. It's really trenched out and dug and whatever they're gonna be doing there, they have begun.
They're putting pylons, reinforcing, so the next storm doesn't.
You're not on. You literally can't hear anything on, on YouTube if you're not on.
They're reinforcing that burn, putting in pylons to make sure that the next storm does not go into the ponds, so. But the trails around it will be shut down until they get done.
So the trails around it are shut down, yeah, yeah, okay. So it looks, when you drive over it, if you kinda look on the south side, if you're heading east on Mesa Ridge Parkway, you can see the big mess they've made down there. But that's an effort to save the pond. Otherwise, the next major storm we have, we may not have a pond. So just be patient with them while they're doing that.
We've been waiting for ten years anyway, so. Not as quite ten years, but close enough. Anything else?
I think that's enough.
Okay. The only thing, so I'm meeting, I'm gonna go to that meeting too, Greg, I was invited to that, so. And I've also got a mayor's meeting tomorrow, so Mayor Suthers hosting us up at his office tomorrow for lunch. And then next week, I mentioned this back in December, I was asked, there's a, it's a, out of University of Wisconsin, I think it is, it's a mayor's innovation project and they put on conferences throughout the, the country and, and they just talk about different things that are, cities are dealing with and so they actually reached out to me and really like what we're doing with Communities That Care and all the work that's gone into that and, and the partnership that we've gotten with them and, and granted, they're, they're kinda the ones that do most of the work with the things that we have, but I know they work with our PD and things like that to, to do some of that. So I'm gonna go out and just present how Communities That Care works with the city of Fountain and, and how the, their targeted, our targeted solutions are helping the broader good. So it's really kinda tying into the adolescent, kinda starting with the adolescent smoking and vaping and, and how it's moved into more of the mental health issues and things like that and, and how much our city's been involved with that from the get-go, across the county and, and really the Fountain Valley has been kinda the, the main source of all this work, 'cause we're the only ones who've been responding, so. Some good stuff coming out there, so I'll be out in DC presenting at that next, next Friday, so kind of a exciting deal to kinda share our story of Fountain. And I'll be on a panel with two other mayors, one from Grand Rapids and the other one is from North Carolina. And so the North Carolina guy, I'm thinking, well Sharon would like this one, 'cause he, they're, they're setting up a tiny home village in their community and, and so he's gonna be talking about that and I can't remember what the lady from Grand Rapids is gonna be talking about. It was all kinda Fast and Furious phone call to try to get our information and so. We'll see, it should be exciting, I don't know. But they're paying for everything, so that's, that's even better. We'll see, okay. And then there was something else I had in my head that I wanted to talk about. Oh. Council agendas, so over the course of the next year, there are some ideas I wanna kinda bring forward to our council and, and reworking our agenda a little bit. I wanna make it a little more efficient, a little more business-friendly in a sense that we're here to do city business and here to take care of the things that we need to take care of as, as we continue to grow and, and keep growing. And so one of the first things we're gonna look at is moving our proclamations, our recognitions, those types of things that usually take a bit of time at the beginning of our meeting. We're looking at possibly moving those to once a month and we'll do them at five-thirty, right before our meeting. A regular meeting, in one Tuesday a month that we have our meetings, to kinda make our regular meetings a little more efficient. So as we move forward, I don't know when we're gonna implement that, but hopefully within the next month or two, we'll implement doing that and again, just to make it a little more efficient and people who wanna be here just for that recognition or just for that proclamation, come in, listen to that and then at six o'clock or five-fifty-five, if you wanna leave, you can leave, it doesn't interrupt and disrupt things and we could start our normal meeting and really hope to cut down on. So we've been getting a lot lately and it's been taking up a good, you know, if we're honest, fifteen to thirty, forty-five minutes of, of just those things, so I'm thinking if we can be a little more efficient with that time. And a lot of communities, I've been looking at how they run their board meetings and their council meetings. A lot of them do it this way and it's just, it's an easier way to kinda do that. So when we wanna do pictures and all that, it's, it's a little more of an informal part of that meeting and, and then we'll get started right with our regular meeting at six, so. Just look for that and, and there's some other ideas I have kinda going in my head that I may wanna throw out there eventually as well, but that will be the first big one that, that will change a little bit. But again, we gotta, I think, work through some, just some things with the city clerk's office and, and ensuring we get that notice properly and that, but I'm looking for that hopefully within the next month, month and a half. So we'll see how that goes, but other than that, that's it for me. We'll go right into our public to be heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on our agenda. We ask that you sign up with your clerk prior to the meeting, we have cards in the back. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but we're direct staff to follow up and out of respect for the council and others in attendance, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. And right now I have one card and it's Ms. Mininger, please come forward. And again, I just wanna remind, if you come up, that we're gonna try to get the lights on and just kinda keep you on, on task with three minutes and we'll go from there.
Deborah Stelt-Mininger, community advocate, citizen scientist. I do hope that everyone had a nice holiday, Christmas and New Years. And welcome to our new city council members, haven't had a chance to say that yet, but welcome. Put the, the hormone balance a little bit better here, which testosterone before. Anyway, one of the concerns that I've been looking at over the last few months and I was down a little bit during the holidays because I managed to get one of those wonderful little flu bugs, so that kinda slowed my, my motors down a little bit. But during that time, I got to listen a lot more to the news and what's going on and as well as when I'm always on the bus and at different places where I'm talking to people off and on, both in here and Colorado Springs and other places in El Paso County. One of the things that knows no, no, no remedy yet and goes on constantly even during the, during the season when people should be in their homes and enjoying themselves with family, is the housing issue. The fact that we still have abyssal amounts of affordable housing and the developments unfortunately do not actually add to the problem because so many of them destroy any affordable housing, whether it's individual or older trailers or anything like that in their way to make all us grand homes and commercial sites and everything else. That's not just in Colorado Springs, that also happens way too often here in Fountain over the last few years. That's not supposed to be a remedy. Affordable housing is something you build, not something you destroy and say, "We're working on it." I tell that to Colorado Springs and I'm saying that here because when people are getting evicted from apartment complexes that are just resold and being told, "Well, when they're done with that, all of that, then they can come back if they want to and apply for an apartment." And people are saying, "Oh, where are we going to find a two-bedroom apartment for twelve-hundred dollars?" Which I think is an atrocious amount of money for a two-bedroom apartment. These are not big fancy places, these are just places to live. And people are worried where they're gonna be living. This is adding to the homeless population, adding to the stress of two and three families living in one apartment or several families in one house. A lot of that is going on and it's being ignored. And then we have a governor who says to the, to the other Democrats, "Oh hey, we're sanctuary state, so send up anybody you want that needs a home, 'cause we got lots of housing." Wow, I wonder where that money's coming from. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Alright, again, I have no other cards, if anybody would like to speak on anything that's not on our agenda, please come forward. And state your name for the record.
Yes, sir, my name is Matt Lewis, I'm the junior vice of the Newt Heasley American Legion Post 38 and I'd just like to let you guys know that we're open. Six-six-eight-five Southmore Drive, Fountain, Colorado, eight-zero-eight-one-seven. We're right behind Walmart there. We've got a few things going on this month. This Friday is the ALR Steak Dinner, American Legion Writer Steak Dinner. The 24th, we're having Legion Host Dinner, we're having pork chops that night. And every Thursday night, we have Ladies Night and Line Dancing Lessons and stuff. So we're teaching people how to dance and things like that. And next month, we've got a couple of things going on, too. We've got a, our Valentine's Dance, it's leather and lace. And we also have all our dinners on Friday nights.
Okay.
That's all. Oh, it's open to the public and families, so we're public friendly.
Okay, alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Excuse me, could you make sure that Joni or Scott or somebody has your contact information? I do the Memorial Day and Veterans Day events and I need to make sure your information, so I can... Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. We will continue plugging forward, our Consent Agenda is item number seven. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members citizen requests, in which case the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. At the discretion of the council, we have items, I think, A through F. Ms. Thompson?
Move to approve Consent Agenda unless somebody wants to remove something?
Ms. Estes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval, please vote. Sorry.
Six yes, motion, I'm sorry, seven yes, motion carry?
She was staring at you. Okay, item eight, Old Business Eight-A, second reading of ordinance number one-seven-four-three and ordinance approving an overall development plan for Aspen Ranch, generally located east of Link Road and north of Kane Road here and after more specifically described in Exhibit A and Exhibit B. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you. Again, this is the second reading of ordinance seventeen forty-three, which was for the overall development plan for Aspen Ranch. It was heard and approved on first reading on December tenth, 2019 and it was approved subject to four conditions that mainly focused on the open space, traffic impact fees, the responsibility of the construction of Link Road, and then the east side transmission recovery agreement. There was also some discussion during the first reading of the ordinance regarding a crosswalk at Link and Watchman. After going back to the subject matter, experts, the city council can also reserve the right in the future that once Link Road is fully built out and if the traffic study comes back and those are warranted, that that crosswalk can go back in if it's necessary. At this point, Link Road is anticipated to be, through all the construction sometime next year, at which point we'll have a better idea as to what that full build-out will look like and the travel speed on that road as well.
So you're saying we can have the developer pay then?
Put it in the crosswalk at that time, yes.
The traffic study at that point, okay.
Otherwise, there were no changes to the ordinance since first reading.
Do we need to add anything, or is that, do we have to say that in our motion?
You can add it as a condition, you can also include it as the motion. It'll also be reviewed again during the preliminary plat, which goes before the Planning Commission if the traffic warrants were necessary at that point. Otherwise, there's other opportunities in the future that the city could go back and take a look at that intersection to determine if a crosswalk needs to be installed or not.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from council?
Would the motion have to reserve the right to get a crosswalk later, or is that just understood?
Okay, make sure your mic's on. So Mr. Applegate's asking if the motion has to have that condition, that's, right? Is that what I'm saying?
Yeah. Do we have to mention that?
Have to, that, that option is gonna exist whether or not you make the condition, but you can also make it clear by adding the condition, however you wanna do it.
I see.
But were you asking about making them pay for the crosswalk or just the study? 'Cause those are two separate things, can we make them pay for the crosswalk if it, if a study warrants it?
We could.
Yeah, that's what we need here.
Okay. I kinda like that idea. Okay, Ms. Thompson, your light's on.
My question is gonna be, I know up when we, up at Snuffles, when we made a condition that they had to help pay for the light signal. By the time it got to that point in the process, years down the road, it was at least triple what we had anticipated it was going to cost and the city had to pay the difference because they had agreed to a certain amount. Is, are we not doing that this time?
We wouldn't be agreeing to a specified dollar amount, just reserving the right that if the traffic warrants come back and a crosswalk is necessary at that location, that the developer would be responsible for installation.
And Richard's question was, would the developer have to pay for the study? Is that what? Okay, and Richard's question was, would the developer have to pay for the study? Is that what they understand it? For the crosswalk study and the crosswalk? What if the study shows like it has to have a light and not just lines on the road or?
The study likely would not come back for a signaled intersection because of the spacing between.
Like the ones right over here where the students push the button and the traffic has to stop. Not a traffic signal.
Yeah, uh, that that can be added into it.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not getting into a situation where they think they're agreeing to a hundred dollars and it ends up being five hundred dollars type thing, you know?
Away from in those agreements is because of the example that you gave. Instead of putting the amount that they would owe, we're just putting in that they would have to fund for the construction of a complete signal to include um, any signalization that was required. That way, we get out of the argument of we agreed that it would be five hundred dollars, but then it ended up being five thousand dollars. It's just you have to pay for it.
It's whatever the study shows is needed.
And we will be internally as a city, we will be completing a study on Link Road once we get it finalized because we're going to have to look at speeds on that road, what's appropriate. Once we get that complete buildout of the hill lowered, the roundabout, all of those things. So there will be an attack, or there will be an opportunity when we complete that to go back with those results to the developer.
So if they participate in helping pay for that at that point in the study, they would get a better deal?
They already are.
Okay.
They're already participating to lowering that hill. So they're participating.
Lower the hill, I mean, if if they were required to help pay for part of the study, it would be cheaper to do it.
That study, they already are because that study's part of that whole Link Road project. They're paying quite a bit to the to the lowering of that hill.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? You have, yeah, I, sorry, stop. You have to come up to the, you can't talk from back there. We need to have you on record.
Yeah. They're talking about a crosswalk there.
And state your name, please, for the record.
Uh, I'm Greg Bowman. I live at 8815 Kane Road, okay? They're talking about a crosswalk there. Now, after their construction bond is expired, is that crosswalk still going to be valid for them to put in after the two-year period?
You're speaking of the the warranty on the road itself?
Exactly right.
Yeah, no, two separate things. The warranty on the road will be one, the the uh, building of the crosswalk will be totally separate.
Okay, so that that will be liable after the two-year period.
You bet.
For how long?
We will, basically what we'll do is we'll attach it to the phasing, which we don't know yet in this process of when they would do it. So probably we'll put it in the mid-phase. I think there there are 240, 270 homes, so we'll probably put it in mid. Uh, and what we want to wait is till we get that Link Road project.
Yeah, I know there's going to be a a boundary of when you're not liable for it and when you are, but I know up to two years, you're going to walk away and and everybody's going to be stuck with the bill after that, but you're saying that's not going to happen.
Two separate things.
Okay, so we're going to have a timeline on that about how long it's going to be?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Okay. Yeah, come forward.
My name is Mike Tebow and um, I've, I uh, am on the Fountain Mutual Irrigation Ditch Board and I would just like to read a few statements that would be included in the minutes. Um, I was asked to come here by Fountain Mutual as a board member. Uh, we're at, for those of you who don't know, we're a irrigation company, uh, been around 130 years or so. Uh, we, our water, um, we irrigate, we have a canal above this property. And when the farmers irrigate, that water will flow across this property. And I came just to make sure that the developers, you guys and everybody is aware of the that they really do a good job studying the magnitude of that water um, and that they take care of it so that that doesn't become an issue down the road. Uh, we've had it in the past, um, where people ignored it. It became a problem and it was their problem. It's not the ditch company's problem, okay? And so, uh, we've had one project here of a couple of years ago, Norwood Development. They uh, they listened. They did a two-year study with pyesometers, measured the water, realized that what their engineering plan was going to be, wasn't going to work, and they ended up having to go to a different method. So I want to read these just so that they're in the minutes. And then if anybody had any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. The irrigation water on that tailwater has what they call a prescriptive easement, okay? So that water from above is going to go across that property. That water cannot be detained permanently. It cannot be forced underground. It has to end up back in Fountain Creek. That's per the state law of our irrigation water. So it can be diverted, it can be channeled, it can be piped, but it has to make it back to Fountain Creek. In this case, it goes into Jimmy Camp and then it ends up down in Fountain Creek. The Cumberland Green uh, people ignored us when they built that. And the water that comes through the Old McGann property, if you're familiar with the area at all, it ends up on the street down there and it runs down the street, down the curbs and off, and that runs all summer long. Uh, this property has the same issue or will have the same issue. Um, when when Jim Morley uh, was going to develop that, he went in on the north side of Kane and he dug all that up, uh, got plenty, stuck plenty of equipment trying to do it. And he put a whole bunch of rock and and pipe to try to take that surface water and push it down into the ground. It didn't work and it and it does affect the road. So I mean, I think engineering can be done, but they need to really take a hard look at that because there's not a real good quantity, quantification of the amount of water that ends up coming through that property. And currently, the detention pond that's there was going to be built for that development. And now what happens, it just fills up with our irrigation water. It's completely full. Then it goes out and it goes under Kane Road, through the McGann property, and then through Cumberland Green and down into um, the Jimmy Camp. So I just want to read these, get them on the minutes, and then I have one other comment I would like to make. So Fountain Mutual's historical ditch operations is over 100 years uh, and have included running tailwater across the Aspen, proposed Aspen Ridge property or the old Lorraine property, which is east of uh, Link Road. The historical operation have resulted in prior and and superseded easement rights for running FMIC tailwater across that property. The Aspen Ridge property is burdened by this historical tailwater easement and and cannot take action that interferes with MIC's easements or rights. The owner must take adequate drainage, must must make adequate drainage improvements that allow the continued tailwater drainage. The historical tailwater easements should not be included as a note on a recorded plat and the property, excuse me, they should be included as a note on the recorded plat of the property to uh, property to place third parties, i.e. purchasers, home purchasers, on notice of the easements and the rights. FMIC will not be responsible for any flood or seepage problems for lots due to continued historical tailwater operations. So you could put that in there, and if anybody had any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Uh, one more note then. I'm Michael Robert Tebow. I live at 1056 Ocean Way Road. I'm a Fountain resident. Um, I would like to see the the, when they do this PUD and they approve the PUD, that uh, the developer considers the amount of lots that he's putting there and that they try to put the bigger lots towards the east as was promised when we got annexed out there by the City of Fountain. And I don't know who all y'all were here when that happened, but I don't recognize too many people that were on the board. But we were forced annexed, most of us. Some of them wanted water, so the city ran water up there. And in that case, we got annexed and some wanted to and some didn't. And they said when they came across that road, the link, people live out there for a lifestyle. They're all small ranches. There's some pretty expensive homes out there. Uh, the McNeese's Place right to the east of this development is uh, he has this 37-acre parcel and he bought a 40-acre parcel uh, in 2000 and um, I want to say it was about 2003, uh, in order so that they didn't develop, then he paid a lot of money for it. And so in their consideration, they they were supposed to do two and a half acre lots and graduate to smaller lots. And I've seen this plan. It's got a boatload of houses on it. And it's a lifestyle living out there. If you know the people that live out there, you can go look and see that these people aren't moving. They're living there for a lifestyle and the money's not going to change them for the next developer. They're going to stay there until they croak. I'd be one of them. So I'd like the council just to at least consider that in the planning department to try to mitigate some of that uh, that high density being that, on that side of the road. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I brought that up at the last meeting if you were here for the first reading.
Well, I missed it. I had, I was gone at another meeting and I, you know, I kind of got wind of this thing kind of late, so I apologize for that.
No, that was, that was exactly what came up. Um, uh, because I asked about that as well because uh, I know where my property is and and some of this development that was possible, or that's still possibly coming in. That's been, that transitioning has been a a big thing um, that's come up as well, so. Uh, it it's it's in the discussion, I can tell you that. Ultimately, that um, I don't know, I'm not aware of any promises that were made that are um, that that they were promised, the these transitions um.
You know, they were, they were verbal, they were verbal commitments. They were say, "Hey, we'll do that." And you know, they kind of did that between REA Road and Kane Road. That has some large lots in there and I think the la, though I know the last developer that tried to come in and do that, uh, they they couldn't get it passed through the council because the council said, "We're going to keep the zone like it is." Uh, and they did not change that. Uh, I will tell you, Integrity Bank owns that property and I bank there and I do, I'm a construction guy too. And they came to me and said, "Hey, Mike, would you go to that council and please ask them to approve this thing and change, get them to try to convince them to change that zone?" And I said, "I'm not going to do it." I said, "City of Fountain's done a pretty good job protecting their citizens on development, even though we need it." Um, but everybody that I know, for the most part, lives down here is because it's a quieter community, smaller community, lifestyle, little ranchy, little farmy, people like that. And I'd like to see, I I I understand growth. We got to have it. It's a good thing. Uh, and it's not because it's in my, not in my backyard type of thing, but I think they they should consider it because if they were to act, I said, you look at my mom and dad's house. That's a 10-acre piece with a, you know, half a million dollar house on it. It's not going anywhere. Uh, Greg lives next door to them. He's not going anywhere. Uh, I I believe that Mrs. Um, Mrs. Um, good lord, my neighbor. Anyway, her daughter's taking her house when she, when she moves on. In fact, she's living there now, my place, and so the Carricks and so on and so forth. And the neighbors across from me built a really nice house on 10, on, they have a, uh, seventeen acres, I believe. So it's kind of, it's kind of set in stone there with those people. I don't see a lot of people that are just going to say, "Oh, the money is going to get me out of here" because they tried that in the early 2000s and nobody sold to the developers that came. So I'd just like them to at least consider that. Uh, I feel like, you know, Fountain's a great place and I don't feel like we need to get the cheapest house and the most affordable liv, affordable living house to get those, to get the the people with a lower income here. I think that we have the ability to step up the game a little bit and we should be able to get some people with maybe a little higher income that can afford a little nicer house and a nicer, bigger lot. And I think it would really bode well for the for the community the way it's built. So.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Okay, I know, yep.
I'm Fran Carrick and I live out east. My position is pretty mu, our position is pretty much the same as Mike's. It is a matter of lifestyle and um, I I too would like to see those smaller lots more on this side rather than out to the east.
Larger lots, right?
The smaller lots.
I I know where you're going. I'm, I'm.
Four thousand square feet is not much. I mean, I think it's, they can have a 10-foot backyard and a 10-foot front yard and knock on their window and ask the neighbor for coffee. It's pretty darn close. And it is a lifestyle out there um, for people who who like to live with horses and dogs and cats and chickens and ducks. We have it in the little ranches and people moved out there for that rural lifestyle and then they complained about the chickens. I remember that. So um, I fear that is what's going to happen out there. The developers and the builders market Fountain as a rural lifestyle. And a house on 4,000 square feet is not rural. So I'm just asking.
It's next door to it.
Yeah. I'm just asking that there be some consideration and then I too am concerned about the water. And if any of you have any questions about what it looks like when the irrigation runs and what it can do to the roads, at the end of um, Ermal and Shumway, that road is torn to pieces every year from irrigation water. So um, I I would hope that the developer would take this into consideration. I met with Scott and Todd today and um, when I went to the Fountain Mutual Irrigation meeting, um, the developer had not approached them about this. So we have assurances that that's going to be a meeting that's going to take place. So um, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
The density of the properties in there being 4,000 square feet.
Pardon? State your name again for the record.
Greg Bowman. Okay, uh, the density of the properties is 4,000 square feet with all the tailwater that comes in that area. It's going to congest it a little bit more. Even just putting a 48-inch pipe down the side of that sidewalk or down that street is not going to get rid of all that water. We know that. We're, we're not kidding ourselves. 4,000 square foot lots are going to condense that water a little bit more and make a lot more problems for the foundations, for the walls, for everything that they have out there, the streets as well. True or false? So bottom line is what what we're looking for is a little larger lot size, something that's more livable. It's like you said last time, last meeting, you grew up on a 6,000 square foot lot and you had some, some concerns about that 4,000 square foot lot. We have a lot of concerns because we drive through there every day. It's our neighborhood. That's where we live. That's our, that's where our kids play. We don't want to drive through broken roads and broken sidewalks and looking at tore-up stuff uh, based on the density of this water and everything that goes through there. So if we can do something about the lot sizes, make a big difference in how everybody feels about this whole deal. Especially me. I mean, uh, it's just, I I travel these roads every day. So I'd hope in your considerations, you would think about what the density of these lots are going to do with the amount of water we have and stuff. And this is what we talked about last time because to the south of that road is full of water year-round. From what, I I know what I send out of my property and I'm the guy that's actually sending that water through that property. I know how much water goes through there. One pipe is not going to fix the problem. So you got to find something that's going to be, you know, uh, uh, justifiable for everybody. I mean, yeah, like I said, you can put catch basins all the way down the side of a road and try and defer it and everything else. But you got to, you, you got to look at the more concrete, the more footings, the more stuff you put in there is going to trap all that and it's going to create a problem for people in the future. Okay, the 4,000 square foot lots are going to bring in a little less desirable than what what we want in that neighborhood. Um, unfortunately, that's just going to be a fact. The the larger lot sizes would would really help the situation, okay? Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Is, is, accidentally you're coming up. You can come up while I'm asking the question. When does that piece of it come in where we really start talking about transitioning?
Um, after Mr. Rick speaks, I can come and address uh, various questions that the the members of the public mentioned.
Thanks.
Gordon Rick, I just want to bring to council's attention, uh, I had a conversation with Dr. Romero, uh, the deputy superintendent for District Eight. The in this development, the children will be going be bust to Jordal Elementary. However, what she said was once Countryside South starts to develop, she's going to have to redraw the boundaries and children in this development will then be forced to go to Eagle Side. So they're going to have to walk across that Link Road sometime in the near future. She couldn't give me a timeline because it just depends on when Countryside South starts building and we don't know when that's going to be. So I strongly recommend we put in the caveat about putting in a crosswalk later. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Okay, and as she's walking up, I, again, we're just at the planning stages. There's the, all that engineering around the water, that that that's kind of going to be their their biggest um, uh, task. And if they can't get it figured out, then they're, they just can't simply do it. Um, so it's, it, just because we're signing off on the Um, so it's, it, just because we're signing off on the, the preliminary plan doesn't mean it's, it's a go ahead. I'm still, as I said before, I am concerned about the transitioning between the larger, I, I don't even call them lots, cause they're so big, um, but the larger areas and straight to four thou- I still think it's crazy, cause when I moved into Countryside West, we were at six thousand lots, and they, and, and we have a, well, not we, my wife had a problem with being able to go to our neighbor's window and ask for coffee. Um, she'd rather just make it in her, in her space, so I get it, and, and so it's, it's an issue. I saw at four thousand, I, I, I know trends and, and the way things go, um, with everything, that just because it, that's where everybody's going, is four thousand square lots, doesn't mean it's, in this area is the right thing to do, especially with transitioning, so, um, I mean, if. Yeah.
Understands that we're gonna make sure, Mike, being in development, he understands the rigors of our processes.
Oh, yeah.
And.
We, we get yelled at about all the time.
Yeah, he's let me know that, how rigorous they are, but one of them was specifically about the water problems that he would have, and that we've put on some pretty heavy demands on him. We're gonna make sure that the done, the same is done with this, uh, project, and as a matter of fact, uh, we went back and we found some documentation. Um, the, the applicant and their engineers have been involved, I've got two from twenty eighteen and one in twenty nineteen, working with Fountain Mutual, um, on the different issues that are gonna go on, and we'll add another layer and make sure that they go to one of their board meetings, so that everything they hear and that we get them working directly together. I don't wanna make sure our engineers aren't in the middle of that. I wanna make sure that those engineers are working with Fountain Mutual, because there's a lot of validity that when that irrigation occurs out there, that the water levels change. If you do a study and you do it right now, it's completely different once irrigation season starts, and there's no way I want that on my plate, um, that, well, we studied it in January, but now we didn't do it when the irrigation flows, so. I'll take us out of the middle, we'll be involved with quality control, but I'm gonna make sure that they get together on that and they take care of that.
At the right times.
In a rigorous process at the right times.
Okay, Ms. Martinez.
Okay, well, I'll mark that one off my list. Thank you, Todd. Um, regarding the lot transitions, that's already, uh, built into their overall development plan, um, and is consistent with the annexation agreement as well. It does have the larger lots on the east side of the development, um, ranging from eight to ten thousand square feet, and then transitions to the smaller lots as it's internal to the development and a long link, um, so buffering that to the east. Um, if you could pull up the aerial real quick. So, directly, here's, right here is Link and Squirrel Creek. The development in question is located right here. Directly north of it is already planned for commercial and zoned commercial. Directly east is one of the property owners that Mr. Tebow had mentioned. Um, it is currently zoned R1, which already allows a minimum of, uh, six thousand square feet, and then it's larger lots as you transition east. Directly south of the development are all individually privately owned, um, lots or parcels, um, so that if, in the future, they ever want to subdivide, they do have that option, but the city's not forcing them at this time. So, in terms of transition, both, uh, the Aspen Ranch Development has an annexation agreement that has the lot transitions built in, in addition to the McNeese property directly east. So, the lot transition's already been, um, discussed and negotiated and built into this overall development plan.
So, ten to eight thousand?
Eight to ten thousand are along.
Or eight to ten?
Yeah, eight to ten thousand is along, um, this roadway right here.
And that other property you, you refer to, what, what are their plans with that?
Right now, uh, they do live on the thirty-seven and forty acre, uh, parcel, um, they don't have any current plans, but as a safeguard in, uh, the early two thousands, they did annex into the city and negotiate an annexation agreement, which did stipulate the lot transitions and lot sizes for that development. But there are no current applications at this time for, for that.
Okay, I have a couple lights on, I'll start with Mr. Geek.
My concern is, uh, has the developer met with the people out there in that area? They seem to be pretty upset about this. And if they haven't, why haven't they? Just questioning that. Seems like to me, rather than come in here and argue about that stuff, they could meet with those people and see if they couldn't get something settled prior to coming to a council meeting. I just think that might be the easier way to do it.
Okay, you don't have.
They shook their head, no, they hadn't met with them, so.
Okay, so that's a great suggestion. Uh, Ms. Thompson?
I agree with Mr. Geek, that was actually gonna be one of my comments, so thank you for beating me to it, um, cause it's a great question. Um, then my other one is, was this included in like the city's, I don't even know what to call it anymore, the city's master plan, overall development? Whatever we did a few years ago, as far as the lot sizes?
For the, um.
City.
The mass, the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Um, the comprehensive plan was done in two thousand five, I don't recall off the top of my head if it was, um, planned for this develop-, or this density at that time.
I, I'd like to, to know if it was planned for that, because I know we got, we had another developer very upset with us for, maybe four or five years ago, that the city comprehensive plan said two and a half acre lots, and he was trying to come in and do much smaller lots, and we didn't allow that, and, um, he was rather upset. But so were the citizens too, for telling us, for driving business out of town, so you just can't win sometime, so.
Okay, uh, and Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, uh, land is expensive, and the smaller lots might be a little bit cheaper. Ms. Meineger spoke about maybe some lower cost houses, and that's a distinct possibility too. We don't know what they're building or what they're gonna price at, but it may be a little better than larger lots, and one thing we will not decide on is whether they're undesirables or not. That's not even gonna come into our consideration, with there are people that are gonna buy homes and move here. That's what we're look, talking about now.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I don't have anything else.
No other changes. Um, so, the only thing, and, and this is difficult, and, and every time a new development comes in, especially in this area, any of these areas where it's, it's really wide open, um, you know, it, 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 uh, it kinda, it brings our own mort- mortality a little bit. I guess is the best way to equate this into the, in the discussion, because, um, I think forever, people just thought, well, if I, I'm out here, there's nothing. No one's ever willing to come out here, and then all of a sudden, uh, I look at Mark Shuffle Road, I look at Lorsen, uh, the one poor family that had their nice big thing right there on, uh, um, Fontaine and Mark Shuffle, and, and now there's just a million houses right behind them, and that's, that's county controlled, and so, um, county's like, sure, just put whatever you want in there, it's okay. Um, so, um, at least with the city, we're trying to, to, trying to do the best thing and, and trying to create some of these transitions and things, you know? We have other properties on that list that already have master plan communities in place, that they're, that they're really looking at, um, moving forward with, and these are, you know, twenty to thirty year developments that, um, that, uh, are gonna affect everything that we have here. And I, I get the whole, um, you know, this is our lifestyle, and this is what, what we bought it for, um, at the same time, other people buy those properties around us, and, and they have different ideas and, of what they wanna do, and, and as growth continues, that's just, that's a reality I think we have to face, and, and uh, it's, it's not the fun part of, of, of development and growth, but, um, it is what it is, and, and it, it's, for lack of a better word, it sucks sometimes, but, uh, I don't know. Uh, it's been one of the biggest struggles, I think, for this community, um, over the last twenty years of, of just, uh, amount of growth, and, and what's kinda going away, um, uh, because Color Springs keeps, um, trying to get on these top ten lists of how wonderful we are, so, uh, I'll talk to the mayor about that tomorrow, but, um, I know his community is pretty upset about that too, so, anyway.
Regarding Mr. Applegate's comment, um, is it a possibility that this would be low income housing out there?
I, that, I'd have to ask the developer on that one, I don't.
So, we don't know that yet. Yeah, so it's, he's going to charge as much as, um, yeah, he's gonna charge as much as allowed to, because it's all about the money.
Right.
So, we know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Okay, uh, with no further discussion, we'll go ahead and make a decision on, oh. I don't know, if you need to, if you want to, you can.
Want to?
Okay, well, I, I've been asking for, and you just sat there, so you need to take some initiative and get up. You, you wanna make the money here, so go ahead.
Public comment was first, so I just wanna make sure we have a chance to.
Go ahead.
I don't wanna use the term re- rebuttal, but, uh.
Well, and we were asking a question earlier, and no one said anything, so, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, I apologize, I must have missed that of, uh, regarding the, the applicant. Uh, uh, my name's Jason Allwine, I'm with Matrix Design Group. We were the applicant, representing, um, uh, developer and the property owner in this case. Um, uh, we did talk in length, you remember, December, about the, the lot sizes, the transitions, the buffers, and I can quickly run through that again wi- with more detail slide. Uh, we feel we are, we are meeting those transitions, and we are meeting the annexation agreement, uh, that was put in place in two thousand five. Uh, so, uh, does this have the pointer? So, per the annexation, uh, agreement land use map, as you can see, along the eastern boundary, we are bound by certain restrictions. Uh, the, we'll call it pink or red is a six to eight thousand square foot in size, uh, that occurs here and here, as well as the green is eight to ten, eight to ten thousand square foot in size, is per, per the annexation agreement. Uh, let me jump ahead. Uh, this map indicates, uh, with ODP that we, um, along the eastern boundary, uh, and per the design standards, which is a sort of a detailed, uh, design standard table on the cover sheet, indicates that the minimum lot sizes will, will meet the six to eight thousand here and here, as well as the eight to ten thousand square foot here, to, um, be in compliance with that annexation agreement. Regarding the four thousand square foot lots, um, that's the, the orange color here, and here, that represents about a third of our total lot mix, or projected lot mix, and as you can see, we strategically placed those interior to development, uh, they're surrounded by, you know, five thousand up to six thousand square foot lots, the larger lots here, and then, again, up here, strate- strategically placed along Link Road, because it's a busy intersection, uh, and that's where higher density tends to wanna gravitates towards, just to buffer the, the five and six thousand square foot lots with, with the smaller unit mix. So, we, we put those there strategically, not throughout the community, but sort of internal, and against Link Road, uh, we felt that's an appropriate place for those four thousand square foot lots.
I don't see your eight to ten thousand square foot lot.
Well, so, so they're identified right here, just in a basic brown, um, they.
Show that.
Show six to eight on the plan there.
Correct, for a minimum. So, the minimum size we have to meet, per the annexation agreement, is six thousand here, and six thousand there, and eight thousand here. That is codified, or will be codified, on the approved development plan, working with staff to ensure those notes are in place to be in compliance with the annexation agreement. So, we need to be at a minimum eight thousand square foot lots right here, and a minimum six thousand square foot lots, this bank here, and this bank right there. And the ODP restricts the lot sizes with notes and callouts to meet the annexation agreement requirements.
But will there be tens? It doesn't say anything about tens there.
Tens, you meaning, so, so this.
Ten thousand, there's six to eight, there's six and there's eight, there's no ten on the plan here.
Right, correct, let me back up. So, the annexation agreement is, so this green lot, which is identified in the brown, is eight to ten thousand square foot, a minimum of eight thousand square feet. We've identified on the overall development plan that, that these units, right here, this, this block, this area, has to be a minimum of eight thousand square feet. Similar to this block of, we'll call it magenta red here, and here, it's a minimum of six thousand square feet. We can't be any smaller than six thousand.
Right, so I, the, uh, the question is, where are the ten thousand square foot, or you're not just putting them?
So, uh, the answer is, that comes in, in the preliminary plan stage. Right now, this is essentially a bubble diagram indicating that we have an area identified as a minimum, a minimum of six thou-, eight thousand square foot here and six thousand square foot there. What that final lot size is, is part of the next step with the preliminary plan, that has to go through the town staff. They will ensure compliance with our, with our lot sizes.
Okay, so I, I think, I'm, I'm hoping, I, you're getting the message that, you know, when I was in school and I was told to write a, a four to six page paper, what did I write? I wrote a four, four page paper. Um, so, I, e- even though my teacher would have rathered me like to write the six, I, I think you get the message, um.
Understood.
And so, when it comes back, and all we see is the minimums, you're gonna have a very hard time.
Understood.
So, that's all I got.
A- a- and, and to be frank, Christie and I have had conversations regarding the lot sizes, and because this is an ODP, i- it's essentially, I don't call it a bubble diagram, but it's an area diagram, um, that level of detail and review happens at the preliminary plan stage.
And, and we understand that, I, I.
Right.
Trying to.
So, I can't.
Prove a point now, so we don't have to do it later.
Understood, understood, thank you.
Okay.
Um, re.
Can you go back to that slide you were at before you, with the other fancy colored there?
Yes.
Okay, somebody asked a question. If you look, there's two red blocks in this that are the ten thousand.
So, okay, so this ten to twelve is right here. So, that is east of, this is Crescent Moon, this is our eastern boundary.
Yeah.
This, this minimum of ten to twelve thousand square foot is right here, that is this block right here.
That, that is not your property?
Correct, it is not.
Okay.
Our, our property is bounded by this white border.
Right, but I'm just saying that there's, it's still kind of a boundary, so, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Y- you know, and, and what I'll also point out is, you know, the block of agenda here is, it currently identified as six thousand, you can go as low as six thousand square foot lots, if at some point in the future, you know, pre- previous comments aside, whether that's forty years, fifty years, two hundred years, could go as low as six thousand square foot lots east of our property.
Well, they could, but.
Could, I mean, that's saying they're, they're going to, I'm just saying.
I've been on this council for sixteen years, and in sixteen years, every council and every citizen has never pushed for the minimum in that transition, so.
Understood.
Um, and we would get into semantics, but, uh, I don't know if you wanna do that with me. Um, okay, anything else?
Uh, yes, I would like to speak, uh, briefly on the, the drainage. Um, going back, again, this was talked to, quite a bit at the December hearing, um, we, we certainly heard the concerns, uh, as Mr. Evans mentioned, we have met and been in contact with them, with FMIC, we do have a letter dated October twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, I believe. Uh, search, indicating that we can't guarantee estimated flows, so one to three releases per year. We understand we need to accomplish, or, uh, accommodate for those flows. Uh, what I'd like to point out with this map is, this is our MDDP, it is a master drainage development plan. This is the, call it the thirty thousand foot view of the drainage in this area. As we go through preliminary plan and final plan, we have to drill in much more detail of how this drainage comes to the site, how we capture that drainage, how we treat that drainage, how we bypass the tailwater around and through our site without detaining it and without stopping it. Uh, we know staff will be, um, tuned in to those details, uh, we'll work closely, closely with them to make sure we address the concerns of not only the neighbors, as well as the staff that we're accomplishing. I'd just like to point out that thi- this basin that we study as a part of our MDDP is two hundred and approximately fifty acres. It's a very large basin, so we know there's a lot of water coming through essentially one location. Drilling down in a bit more detail, with the FMIC water, it collects approximately right here, uh, and working with FMIC, we, uh, are proposing to pipe that. Right now, there's a forty-eight inch proposed pipe, that's a fairly significant sized pipe to capture that tailwater. It captures, gets piped around and directly across Link Road out to the west. It does not enter our detention facility, uh, does not get detained. It's essentially called a bypass flow, uh, because we cannot stop that water.
Right.
You said you, you, you sent them, or they had sent you a letter October twenty-fifth?
Uh, correct, eh, October twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, correct.
That's not what.
Uh, I mean, yeah, I mean, we, we have it. April twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, signed, um, G- Gary Elstein, Fountain Mutual Irrigation Company.
So, you were contacted, the ditch company was contacted.
We, we. A- a- and we have additional, yeah, okay.
All right, I just.
I know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I, just, again, we, we, we know that drainage is a very large concern, uh, and obviously, as we drill down in the, in the details, we, we can either, as mentioned earlier, we can either accommodate it, um, or we cannot, and we'll have to come up with a solution to do so.
Okay, okay. Anything else? Any further questions for him? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um.
Just one more thing. I did attend the stockholders', um, stakeholders' irrigation meeting, um, in January. I did attend the stockholders', stakeholders' irrigation meeting in January. They have one meeting a year with Fountain Mutual Irrigation, and I asked them at that meeting if they had been contacted by the developer regarding the development they were putting on Kane and Link. And Gary Steen was there, Mike Fink was there, Mike Tebow was there, all of the other board members were there, and they all said unequivocally, no. So, there's obviously a memory recall deficiency-
There's a letter there.
-if there is a letter here. But we were told, yeah, but we were told in that meeting that they had not been contacted.
Okay.
So, just want you to know.
Good. And I'm going to make sure that they- Okay, thank you.
Greg Bowman. So, as a master plan, they have four thousand square foot lots going in. What percentage would be in the ten thousand range, the eight thousand range, the five thousand, and the six thousand? Are we going to be one percent on the ten thousand square foot lots and three percent on the eight thousand? They have a master plan that's already drawn up, right? We should be able to find out the high percentage of the four thousand to five thousand square foot lots, which is going to raise the density of that property. True or false? Can we, as residents, get some kind of information on that?
Again, that-
I've never been contacted, and I live the next farm right up from this project.
Yeah.
I've never been contacted since this whole project's been going on. So, I don't know exactly what they have going on, but I would like to know, I would like to have some kind of an idea of what's going on down there.
And that's why the suggestion was made to meet with the, because you are not a part of the path of the least resistance, so, yeah. So, we're going to see if we can push that issue a little bit and-
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay.
We can get back to the map, but I can kind of answer what those percentages are. Regarding the neighborhood meeting, when we submitted this, we followed code as far as sending the letters out, notifications. Don't recall any major issues coming up. Clearly with staff, if there was a need for a neighborhood meeting based on adjacent letters of either opposition or questions, I know staff very well, we would have had that neighborhood meeting. With the post and the plan commission, obviously, there were some public comments, but up until that date, we hadn't sort of seen or heard any major opposition with the project.
I know, but that happens.
It does, understood. So, to answer the question, based on the areas and the projected sort of calculations, we have ten percent roughly of the six, we'll call it six to ten thousand square foot lots based on the annexation agreement. Most of our units are a minimum of five thousand and larger. That's over half of fifty-five percent. And again, that roughly thirty-six percent is the four thousand square foot lots. And again, those lots, we are meeting the annexation agreement requirements and agreements in place with those larger lots on the border.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, again, let's go ahead and see if we can make a decision on, a second reading. We have the provision about the, if we'd like to add on about the crosswalk. Again, this is going to, there's more pieces and parts to this that, got to go through planning and planning commission, and one of our planning commission members is back there. He's heard quite a bit and understands what concerns and frustrations are and where we go from there, so.
Just a clarification for whoever makes the motion. Do we have to, I understand about the crosswalk. We want to add that. But do we have to read in the four recommendations that are in here, or is that, Christie said that had been included?
Those were already included in the first reading, so unless you want to amend or change those, they do not need to be read back into the reference.
All right. It's just been a few minutes since you said it.
Are we ready to make a motion?
We're ready.
Okay.
Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, I move that we accept ordinance seventeen forty-three on second reading with the exemption that whatever the traffic study shows is needed there will be put in by the developer.
Mr. Lauer?
Wait a second.
Discussion?
I'm sorry?
Discussion, please?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I understand your motion, but I believe the discussion was around a crosswalk, and by making the motion, it says whatever is needed there. If the study comes back and says it needs a traffic signal and a left turn lane and all sorts of stuff, would that motion make that person responsible for all that, when I believe what possibly was meant would be just the crosswalk? I don't know. I'm-
No, because it might need a light, like you said.
Randy's answering the affirmative.
Answering what to the affirmative? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood what his motion was at that point.
All right, anything else? Okay. Go ahead and vote.
I have five yes, two no, Councilmember Thompson, and Mayor Ortega voting no. Motion carried.
Okay.
I would like to clarify why I voted no on that, because I'm not voting no against the development. I'm voting no against the motion that was made that he would have to pay for any and all development that the study showed. I would have agreed to a crosswalk, paying for the crosswalk, but if it came back and said they needed to dump another million dollars into it for things that they're only partially responsible for, and other developers could also be responsible for part of it, I didn't think that was necessarily fair to the developer to be responsible for all of it.
Okay, mine is simply, again, about the transitioning and, you know, and I mentioned the path of lethal resistance. I mentioned, you know, you're going to go with the minimum anytime you can. We're all in it for the big buck. You know, we're constantly, as a city, berated by developer A and B and C because we're so difficult to work with, yet all the concerns that people are coming up with are the exact reason why we're so difficult. We're not up here doing this because it's just a fun thing to do. But at the same time, there are people who are a part of this community for a long time, and growth is hard on people. And just to come in and do what you think you're going to do on your little plot of land and get out of here, it's happened too much and too often here, and if we're going to be difficult, and we're going to be difficult, if you don't want to build here because of that, then find somewhere else, I guess. I don't know. We're going to continue to be difficult. We're not the only entity that you have to deal with. But we've been burned a few times, and we don't want to keep getting burnt, and so we're going to keep asking the questions. And I don't know that we need to ask every developer to come in and meet with the neighbors. I think it's good business. I think it's the best way to get what you want in. We shouldn't have to be told that it's a good thing to do. I don't know. Maybe that's just me being naive, so. We'll go ahead and continue moving forward. Item eight B. Second reading ordinance of number one seven four four, an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Fountain from single-family, small lot residential district and village center district to planned unit development. District for properly generally located east of Link Road and north of Kane Road, also known as Aspen Ranch, here and after, more specifically described in Exhibits A and B.
The first reading of the rezone request did accompany the overall development plan for Aspen Ranch, which was heard and approved at December tenth, two thousand nineteen. There have been no changes to this ordinance since first reading.
Okay, any questions on this? Any questions from the public? Okay, seeing on what would council like to do with this item? Ms. Thompson?
Moved to approve.
And Mayor Protim?
Wait a second.
Okay, with a motion and second for approval on second reading, please vote.
Six yes, one no. Motion carried. Mayor Ortega voting no.
Okay, and item eight C, second reading of ordinance number one seven four two, an ordinance repealing and reordaining Title Seventeen zoning of the Fountain Municipal Code and all other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and declaring a zoning map with a print date of November thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, as the official zoning map. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance seventeen forty-two, which is to codify Title Seventeen of the Fountain Municipal Code, which focuses on the zoning ordinance specifically. At first reading on November nineteenth, it was approved subject to ten conditions, and I will not read all ten conditions. But one condition I do want to focus on is condition number eight, which dealt with the signs within the right of way. One of the parts of the condition included an allowance of unlimited signage between October first and the first Wednesday after November first. After that, went through a legal review to ensure that it was content neutral, based on the Supreme Court case of Reed versus Gilbert. The attorneys came back and said that it was not content neutral and therefore would have to be modified. So, in order to still follow through with the intent of city council, staff would recommend that that section be amended to remove that exception of the additional signage between October first and the first Wednesday after November first, but add a extended period revocable permit allowance for any applicant that would provide for a thirty-day consecutive time period, one time of year, for them to put up the signs. So, it would apply universally to anybody to place signs within the right of way one time a year and not limited to a specified time period. Otherwise, there were no other changes to that ordinance.
Okay, Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, on the thirty days that you're giving everybody, that's still content neutral, isn't it? How could we tell them you can't put that sign up because of what it says?
We're not saying anything about what it says, but it's content biased when it's specified to a certain time period of the year because it's implied that we're allowing greater signs for elections. If we are allowing that to anybody, anytime during the year, then we are not violating the Supreme Court decision.
Does the Supreme Court say you can't do it around election time because it might give an advantage to election signs?
It's providing an allowance specifically to anybody putting up those election signs and would not provide that same allowance to anybody else during the same time of the year.
Why wouldn't it?
Because if somebody in March wants to put up a sign for advertising something-
In October, anybody can still put up anything they want to put up.
Correct, but it's content neutral based on that time period. So, when you tie a time period to it, it's making it violate the federal Supreme Court so that we allowed it to be anytime during the year that somebody-
I don't understand. It's content neutral here. It's content neutral there. All we're saying is that you can't do it except that time of year. If we do it this time of year, you're going to have people, different days of different weeks and months, all getting their thirty-day permits. It'd be a nightmare for anybody to ever monitor who's been up for how long or anything else.
Troy?
This is a particular question that one lower court has taken up, and what they had decided, and I would, it's not a reported case yet. It's not written in stone law, but the idea would be that this kind of regulation, while content neutral on its face in application, is actually not content neutral because it's clearly designed to circumvent the spirit of what the Supreme Court decided, which was, which was that all signs should be content neutral. And that was, that was sort of the spirit of what the Supreme Court decided, and so in application, this and a regulation of having signs up just during election season, while potentially content neutral on its face, in application, it really exists to allow people to put up election signs, which is against the spirit of the law.
That's pretty vague.
So, it, in, I guess, kind of the summary would be is, we may have found a loophole that may end up getting closed. And so, I'm not sure we want to be on the wave that has the loophole question in court going forward. It would be the way that I would explain it.
Well, okay, I see that, but this is going to be impossible to enforce. Thirty-day things will come at any day they come in and get a permit to go further, and they're going to be all different days. They're going to be all over town. They're going to be doing whatever they want to do.
No, they can't pull a second one. I thought it was thirty days.
No, but there'll be different people at different times coming in all the time.
Well, I mean, if they want to put the time and effort in to do that, I guess.
I think what he's saying is, I come in for my candidate, and I, if I'm helping a candidate, I come in on Monday and pull a sign permit, right? And then Greg comes in and pulls one on Tuesday for the same candidate, and she comes in on Wednesday and pulls one for the same candidate. We're all getting thirty days. Is that correct? Because we can't judge the content.
What is it, thirty days from when they pull that?
It's, for not more than thirty consecutive days and cannot be issued consecutively at the beginning of the year and the end of the year. So, it would be based on the applicant.
Because it's an extension.
I guess, no, more my question is, I can't pull it on January first and use it, use my thirty days anytime in the year. It has to be that.
Correct. It would be January first.
So, Troy, can we, just to make it for ease of the office staff, so they're not spending hours every day issuing these permit, can you say permits are only issued on Mondays between ten and two, or four and seven, or, I mean, I'm trying to make it so that's, we don't have to hire a part-time person that does nothing but issue these permits, I mean, and then somebody that has to enforce them?
What would the reality of-
I really don't think it's going to be a huge issue.
I don't see it as a huge issue, except for a couple of months every year.
I don't think it would be, the burden would probably not be on administrative staff, but it may be on code enforcement trying to enforce these things.
Right, that's what I'm trying to figure out is how-
That would make it difficult, and I don't know the answer to that. I don't know how to do-
So, then our other choice is just to say-
No signs?
Well, we have two choices then. Well, you go no signs. Boom, we're done. I'll do my little thing up here again. We say yes to signs, then we can still do the Thursday, Friday to Monday, noon to noon.
Correct.
Period. Still do that, period. Or no signs.
Or no signs.
Or a different, or a different guidance.
Correct.
Okay, a different idea that anybody would come up with. Free for all.
Is that your light time?
I'm sorry?
Your light's on. Is that-
Oh, that was from-
That part of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, okay, I'm just trying to make sure.
Correct.
I'm trying to think of the management of it from the code enforcement and the staff permit process of it. And can we charge for these permits, Troy?
Yes, we can.
Oh, heck, yeah. I mean, oh, yes, we will.
Yes. There will be a fee associated with the permit.
So, there'll be a fee associated with the permit, so how do you, so can we?
I got another.
Can there be two fees? Can there be one for the, like, the, I'll call them snipe signs for the weekend signs for ease?
Yes. There would be two separate fees, one for the revocable and one for the extended period.
Extended can have, can, and, oh, we can make it like four hundred, five hundred dollars so they really don't want to come out here pulling. It's got to pay for the people that are going to pick it up and monitor it. Why, why should the average citizen who is not, doesn't care about signs have to pay for code enforcement when it, you know? And I get, I get, I've been there. I've put out my share of political signs over the years, some in the right place. Oh, all of them in the right place. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, I have a question for Troy. What would be happening if we just waited another month other than October? So, we had two different months that they could do it during the year. Then at least we could monitor when the signs are out, make it June or something that they could have that month, April.
To me, that just seems like semantics.
Especially if, you know, it could be, you know, what if you choose primary season and a court could interpret that as both being for election signs, right?
And if we did it in April, it would be an advantage to the realtors?
Yeah, potentially, yeah. And they could, but they could interpret it either way, right? That whatever, whatever season you pick, or you pick summertime, or, you know, early spring, and you would help the, you would help the people who post signs to irrigate your lawn, right? And I think you run into, you're going to run into that, however you pick a time for, a time period is going to, is going to be interpreted as you're trying to regulate the content.
You know, St. Patrick's Day people.
I don't see it that way, but whatever. I mean, make it fair for everybody. How you going to do that?
Again, I don't think it's, I don't think it's crystal clear, but I think that's the way the courts are going.
Law and law, you're going to have people saying you're infringing on their freedom of speech. But this is only public right of ways. This is not on your private property.
Free to speak all they want.
So, if you own a fence on eighty-five, you may have a new business. Rent your fence out.
Basically, going to have signs out all year then. Always.
Okay. I hate signs. Anybody have anything to say on this one?
Chris, one last, Christie, a lot of cities, rather than struggle with this, as you pulled up some of the document, a lot of cities are just going to-
No signs in the right of way.
No signs in the right of way.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Rather than dealing with the struggle that we're facing tonight.
Yeah, I believe, I can't, Pueblo?
Pueblo, Longmont, Avada, Boulder. Um, Pueblo, Longmont, Avada, Boulder, there's various others. Colorado Springs hasn't undertaken their code yet. County hasn't undertaken their code yet. So locally, we are the first to embark on this transition. Correct.
Yeah, that's the cleanest.
They avoid all issues by just saying...
And then you just have to find people's private property to put your signs on.
Correct.
Rent their space and their fence.
Go ahead, Troy.
You know, I think this is an important issue. We can also move forward with this item without signs and keep discussing it. That's an option that we have as well. And, and, and get this, get this passed and then deal with signs later if we wanted to. Let me just throw that out there, if there's some disagreement, or we just hash it out right now and figure it out and...
I've been through the sign thing before, it's not fun.
Okay.
It's a difficult issue to tackle and address.
And we can always come back and amend it in a year.
Yes, we can.
If there's a huge problem and people are really upset about it.
Once we're through the presidential election and no signs, if we go that route, we can come back and rehash it.
Ms. Estes?
A quick question, Troy, on if we go to no signs, does that set us up for any lawsuits because of not providing freedom of speech?
Absolutely not. It'd actually be the easiest and cleanest and least risky option to do, quite frankly. So if, if I had a vote, that's what I would vote.
Did the attorney just say that?
Just, uh... Let me finish, let me finish. Just be, just because it would make less work for me, that's what I'll say. So it would make...
By the way, if you want his vote in the next election...
It would certainly make my job easier if you did that.
You don't want to go to Supreme Court?
I do not. Well, it would be fun, but...
An all-expense-paid trip to DC?
That was funny.
Yeah, and, yeah, code enforcement would agree.
That's really a huge concern for me, is how much code and time do we want code enforcement to spend trying to figure out the signs? And then people are upset because their neighbor has weeds up to their armpits and they don't have time to do about it because they're chasing signs down the road. Yeah.
Chris has dealt with this, but I used to deal with a tremendous amount of sign calls when our code enforcement was running around with their back in their pickup trucks, pulling the signs, especially in political season.
And that, that part, though, is always going to come up, whether we allow them or not, or have these, that's always going to be there, that's a part of it, so, okay. All right, let's, without making this any further, any questions or comments from the public?
Can we talk about, just one question on compliance? If we do go this way, obviously, it's going to be a huge change to our community and with it not being allowed in communities around us. If we, if it does vote for no, is there any type of way to...
Inform the public of the change?
Inform the public.
And grace period?
Not necessarily a grace period for no fines. Is there going to be fines if they have to pick them up if they're in the right-of-way? I mean, how is that...
I don't believe there's fines associated with it. They would just be pulled and disposed of. It would really just be an information push out through social media, the local newspaper, handouts, and just getting the information out to the public in any form possible.
But I know in the past, they've made an attempt to save signs for people, and it just becomes a nightmare of trying to get all that done, so. C.Dot, if they pull your sign, it's...
It's gone.
It's gone.
Okay.
Well, that's what I'm kind of trying to get to.
Okay, why don't you stay up there? Because this will be easier for you.
So I, over the last month, I took some pictures of some signs around town, and I'd like to go through them very quickly to get Christie's opinion of, under the current ordinance, would these signs be allowed or not allowed?
Okay, well...
Yes, sir.
What's the point of this?
I want to make sure we understand what we're getting rid of with this ordinance. Well, I think we know, signs in the right-of-way. Go ahead. Five.
Okay, quickly. That sort of thing needs to get approved through us first because, and this is belaboring the point, we haven't even decided if we're going to allow them or not. I don't know that we need to get into this, who, what they look like. I think we all have a pretty good idea, so...
I can back off if you want me to.
If everybody wants to hear it or see it, go ahead and... Go ahead.
Next slide, please. Oh.
Oh, I can do that, sorry.
So this is a sign that was out at Squirrel Creek and Link Road, a community Christmas dinner, a free giveaway hosted by the Hanover Community Church. This is a banner, it's about six feet by two feet. Would this be allowed under our current code?
The current code or the proposed?
The proposed code.
No.
No, so banners such as for...
Because it would not meet the minimum height and area.
Right.
If it's in the right-of-way.
Right, so any kind of banner, whether it be for Bible school, summer school for kids, Juneteenth celebration, Historical Preservation Week, all those kind of banners would go away. Next slide, please. Fountain Community Theater, it's about four feet wide by three feet high. This would be allowed or not be allowed anymore?
It would depend on the size of it, if it met the minimum area and height. And it would, it doesn't appear to be the minimum setback as well.
Next slide, please. This meets the height and requirements. However, as I understand it, these signs would only be allowed from Friday to Monday. Most of these sports-type signs, they want to put up for several weeks trying to get kids to join up. Would they be allowed a sign for the thirty-day permit for each sport? Or would it be...
Based on the applicant. It would be on the applicant.
Okay. So wouldn't be allowed, they'd be allowed to do it once a year?
Correct, it's a one-time permit.
Okay, next slide, please. This one is essentially the same as the previous one, other than it's much, much bigger. However, it's put up by the city, so, correct me if I'm wrong, this sign is allowed because since the government put it up on government property, they can put whatever where they want.
We can put it on government property, correct.
Okay. When this ordinance was completed in, or, I believe it was November, did we post it on the city website? Or did McCool Solutions post it on their website so people could review the final draft?
It's located in both locations. There's a link on the city's planning department page that directs them to the public link that's hosted by McCool.
Okay, thank you. That, I would just bring up to council, we're making a huge change here to what we've been doing in the past. We're going to be getting rid of all these types of signs. Be careful what we get rid of. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so we need to approve or disprove the actual second reading with the caveat of, do we want to allow them based on the wording that staff provided to us? Or do we just want to disallow it altogether on right-of-way? So... Does that, does that make sense? Did I make, is that clear?
Yes.
Okay.
I will answer, yes.
Thank you, I'm looking to, he doesn't want any work.
Yes, so in the Title seventeen, all ten conditions from first reading can either be carried over with the amendment that staff suggested, or condition eight can be modified to not allow them.
Okay. Yes.
So do not need to read all ten again, only if you're going to make amendments to condition eight.
But we can do the weekend signs, so the realtors can have the signs out in public right-of-ways?
Yeah, that can stay as, if you want that.
I personally don't want to put them out anyway. And the home, the home builders can have their signs out for the weekend for their new developments?
And I was hoping Marla from the HBA was still here, but it was actually left.
Again, this is only public right-of-way. So no to everything or modi, take out the...
Or modify condition.
Modify it.
Yeah, I think that's the, that's kind of the, the piece, it's, it's the sign, so... Here's another option, because I don't, I, I know where I want to go with this, and I don't know where everybody else will want to agree with me on this. And Troy mentioned kind of a piece of this. Could we vote on the zoning ordinance itself, minus the sign thing, but then take a separate action or separate motion on just a sign thing? Can we do that? Do you know what I'm saying?
Or postpone the signs.
And that, that's not a bad idea because that would make it cleaner. That way, when you get to the sign part of it, you could make multiple motions if one failed, and then you could figure out the particular reason it failed.
I don't want the zoning to fail because of the sign thing. Does that make sense?
I think, I think that's, you could, you could certainly make that motion for just everything in Title seventeen except for the...
The signs in the right-of-way.
Signs in the right-of-way. And then address that right after.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to make the motion to approve the zoning ordinance on second reading, items one through seven, nine, and ten, and we will vote on eight separately. Is that, can we do that? Okay, so that's my motion. Ms. Estes?
Second. Discussion?
Oh, go ahead.
I would like a date on this and when we're going to bring it back. I just really don't want to... Oh, okay.
We can do that right now.
That's soon enough.
Yeah, no, that was my, that was my...
So it doesn't hold up everything else, just specific to the signs?
Okay, is that okay with everybody? Let me, so if I need to modify that, we can, but I would like to just do it right now if it's okay.
We already did that, so...
Okay, so we have a motion as second for items one through seven, nine, and ten on the zoning ordinance. Please vote.
Seven, yes, motion carried.
Okay, now, back to the sign issue. So at, I guess, do we want to allow the signs in right-of-way based on the, the new verbiage? Or do we just not want to allow it at all? I think those are the two main points, right? Do we need to take a break?
I agree.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break. We're taking a five-minute break. You guys took too long.
I'm good with no signs. I, I know that the...
And I'm gonna be looking at you guys.
Somebody's not gonna be fair.
I know.
He can't always be fair with everything to everybody, it's just- That only works for Bernie Sanders.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we're waiting for Ms. Dietrich. What's that? Oh, we're, Ms. current, uh, Ms. Joanie? Ms. Joanie? Okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, did you guys need to clear any, clarify anything?
Nope, we're okay.
Okay. All right, so, uh, I'm gonna reiterate one more time. Uh, we either just remove the right-of-way, or just remove it totally, so no signs in right-of-way, or, um, at the moment, this addition of the revocable right-of-way. Sign permit applicant may apply for one extended period revocable per calendar year. Um, so, that portion, um-
Friday through Monday. Correct.
Oh, yes.
So there's a third option.
So, thanks for throwing that monkey wrench in. Okay, um, I will take a motion. Mr. Lauer?
I move that we would not allow any signs in the public right-of-ways at all.
Okay, Mr. Geek?
I second that one.
Okay, we have a motion in second, um, to not allow, uh-
Could we address this some other time later in the future, depending how this works out?
Yeah, you're the legis- you're the, you're the legislative body. You can, you can change it however you want.
So this could be changed, okay, we need to.
Okay, all right, uh, vote.
Six yes, one no. Councilmember Thompson voting no. Motion carried.
Okay, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, anybody who's mad, call me. Well, we'll revisit it, right? 'Cause I have the right to do that. As the person who lost, I can do it in six months or something like that.
Uh, the timeframe, I would have to look into. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, I don't know the timeframe, but yes, there is a timeframe.
There's a timeframe, I can re-bra- brought up, yeah. And, um, I just, yeah, I have concerns about freedom of speech and taking it completely away, but I understand it, it's only in the right-of-way, so if you're upset about it, you, for right now, uh, send me your comments, and, um, then, um, we can look at it, figure out what the time is, and maybe work at it a little bit more. You know, it's a living law, right? It can be revisited. And, um, um, I lost my train of thought.
It can be revisited.
It can, my train of thought, too, yeah.
Okay.
It can be revisited.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll move on to item nine, new business. Uh, no items removed for consent agenda, so we'll, I, move on to nine, whoo, move on to item nine B. I'm opening a public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 1745, an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City of Fountain from the planned u- planned industrial PI District to Regional Commercial RC District for property sometimes known as South Park Technological Center located at 7159 and 7219 Banley Drive, Fountain, Colorado, and here and after, more specifically described in Exhibits A and B. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you. Again, this item is for the South Park Technological Center rezoned. It's located north of Highway 16 on the east side of Banley, so this is the Highway 16, 132 exit at I-25. Loves is on the corner. This property is located just north of that interchange. The property is currently zoned, the planned industrial zone district, and they are requesting a rezon to the regional commercial district for approximately five acres. There are two parcels, 7159 and 7219 Banley Drive. The northernmost parcel is currently vacant, and then the southern parcel has the RV storage warehouse that has no, um, utility services to that location at this time. The surrounding area is consistent with the rezon. This area has materially changed and has, in how it, in how it has developed over the years is to more commercial rather than an industrial. Um, this is also an emphasis on the city's entryway and corridor, and it's, um, advantageous to have much more commercial rather than, um, heavy industrial zoning along our entryways. The zoning exhibit, again, just to show the two parcels in question, uh, this is the location of the parcel with the, um, RV storage, and then this is vacant. The comprehensive development plan, future land use plan recommends business park and industrial for this area. Uh, the request is not consistent with the future land use plan, however, we would be supportive, uh, of the deviation since there has been a material change in the area in how it has developed. Staff finds that the request is consistent with review criteria two and three outlined in the zoning ordinance. This item was presented before Planning Commission at their December meeting with an affirmative vote of seven to zero. Therefore, staff would also recommend approval, uh, tonight of ordinance 1745 on first reading. Is there any questions for staff? Uh, that, that one might work. Let's try to show a little bit further out. So down at the bottom off of this image is the Highway 16 interchange, so it's on the north side. And Banley Drive runs along here. This is the trail that cr- uh, goes over Fountain Creek.
Oh, that's a trail? Oh, it's drawn like a road.
It's, it was a formal road that's been vacated, um-
That's where I was confused.
On the east side of Banley. Of this, yes, of the interchange. Uh, there's a metal storage building with RVs right here, and then this is vacant.
Okay.
That's further north. And the applicant is here, if you have any questions for him, or if you would like to present anything to council.
I understand now where it's at.
Okay. Uh, did the applicant have anything they want to say, or just gonna wait? Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions for Chrissy or applicant at this point? Okay, uh, it is a public hearing. Does any public want to get up and speak on this item? Okay, see none. Any further discussion from council? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And, uh, unless further discussion, what would council like to do? Uh, Ms. Estes?
I move to approve ordinance number 1745 on first reading.
Okay, and Mr. Geek?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second for approval. Uh, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay. Thank you. Um, item nine C, Resolution 20 dash 004. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Fountain, Colorado approving contract modification order number three for the Duckwood Road Crossing and CNS Road Project to Kiwit Infrastructure, um, code. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and Council, Brandy Williams, City Engineer. Um, I am bringing the final contract modification order for the Duckwood Road Project. Thank you, those of you who were able to attend the ribbon cutting, and hopefully everyone's had a chance to drive it by now. Um, if you have any questions or comments, I'm here. If not, this was just everything we had to wrap up to get it done. Make sure that we had a turn lane at CNS. We closed Mesa, which I think ran smoother than I anticipated, so that was good.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
Very nice. I, I actually had the opportunity to drive State Representative Lois Langgraf down here for a meeting one day, and I said, "We're early," and I drove her through the roundabout, and she was absolutely thrilled. She thought it was fantastic with the, much safer with the turning lanes in both directions, and she said hats off to you guys.
Thank you.
No questions from anybody? Okay, see none. Uh, what would council like to do? Uh, Mr. Geek?
Make a motion to approve Resol- Resolution 20 dash 004 on first reading.
Uh, and Ms. Duncan?
I second.
Okay, uh, please vote.
Mr. Applegate, I need your vote, please. Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay. Item nine D, Resolution number 20 dash 005. A resolution authorizing the award of a construction management general contractor CMGC contract between the City of Fountain and Daniel Berry Construction, Inc. for the remodel of Fire Station Number Two Construction Services. Chief Maxson?
Good evening. Uh, before you, you do have the contract for the remodel of our Fire Station Two. Fire Station Two was built in 1982 as a volunteer fire station. Uh, this, uh, remodel will add 1,206, uh, square feet of new bunkroom space. We'll have separate bunkrooms for the male and female firefighters, and we're remodeling 1,260 square feet of existing, existing space into a day room, and also remodeling the kitchen that was originally built, like I said, in 1982. Uh, we will also be, uh, putting an automatic fire sprinkler system in the building, which is required by Modern Day Building Code. Um, with, and we also are doing our own demolition, uh, because we do have tools for that, uh, to save, uh, the taxpayers a little bit of money. Also, the city is doing a, a lot of its own utility work to try to save money there as well. I stand for any questions that you may have. It, it is good. It is.
Okay, I have no questions. Um, this, I think this is way, way overdue, uh, this remodel, and it'll help with kind of everything we've been fighting for, for the fire department, especially in that area, and, uh, being able to provide um, better services, including an ambulance. Um, and, uh, we already have this one manned, and, and we can continue to, to man that, and, and, uh, you know, the, the big discussion that someone even, was it tonight or some other time, that, yeah, we could build a new fire station somewhere, but we still can't man it, so. Um, at least this one, it's already manned, and, and the improvements, I think, are gonna help with response times and everything else, and, and, uh, just give us more stuff to do there, so, um-
Much more nice for the people to live here.
Oh, yeah, much nicer.
The beach improvement, and just, 'cause we have the need to keep it staffed while it's under construction, we do have two fifth wheels the crews will be living in for six months. 'Cause that was the fastest way to get this completed, is get them out of the way, sell these lights, the truck bays, and they'll live in those fifth wheels during the construction, so we can get this taken care of.
Yeah, okay.
Keep the station open.
Um, any questions? Uh, Ms. Thompson?
I know one of the issues at this station was also with the, when they pulled up, when they start the trucks up, and when they bring them back in, the exhaust, is that gonna be addressed also?
So with this station, we actually do have the, uh, correct, um, exhaust system with the hoses. It's actually a different, uh, our station, one is the only station without those exhaust hoses currently, but this station is, is well-equipped with that.
Okay, so, okay, good, thank you.
Uh, okay, uh, Ms. Duncan?
I don't have a question. I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, um, this, for the fire station.
Okay, uh, and Mr. Applegate?
Second.
We have a motion in second for approval. Please vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Applegate, I need your vote, please. Seven yes, motion carried.
I keep getting, turning off the other button, and that's it.
Okay, um- Item ten, correspondence, comments, and extraneous reports. We'll start with City Manager, Mr. Trainer. Uh, Mr. Evans, glad you're back, and your wings getting on a mend?
Feeling really good over here at this point in the night.
Good, okay.
I keep bumping him, too, that's-
Um, uh, Mr. City Attorney?
I've said plenty tonight.
Yeah, you did. Chief Maxson, anything further?
You only had a vote.
Okay. Uh, Chief Heber?
Yeah, a couple things. Uh, uh, thank you, happy new year, everyone. Uh, Rick Clemens, I was able to see him do a brief on the rec center today. Came in brief to the CTC meeting. Rick did a great job, highly motivated, uh, really represented the city good, and got some donations, uh, so that's good. Um, our SOR contract, you approved on consent agenda, a reworking of the SOR contract. We, we have relooked at that entire contract, top to bottom. Um, we found out the school district was probably paying about 60% of the contract. We all agreed, based on the time the SOR was in the school, it's gonna be 73. So with them choosing to do two additional full-time positions, it'll be a net to the city about 140 grand, uh, which is going into it, fully paid by the school district. So that's very good for the safety of our kids and the value there, which is good. Um, legislature season is in full swing. There's a lot of bills that law enforcement is very concerned about, uh, this year, that will impact the way we do operations and then resources. So we're keeping our, uh, eyes on that. The red flag law is in effect. I'll just tell you that. Everybody in our region is taking that bill very seriously and the impacts, to include the judges, uh, Chief Judge Bain. It's only himself and three judges, only three, so four judges total, that are gonna look at all those, uh, different affidavits and requests for red flag laws. Make sure they make a high standard of proof. Make sure we get around, uh, some of the fears that somebody's ex, or it's a revenge type of thing, uh, et cetera. Um, I have strong feelings on the, both the Constitution and obviously guns. Anyone knows me, might, knows my stance on guns personally, however, comma, we run a police department, we're gonna follow the law. We're gonna do it very humanely, very compassionately. Um, so there's a lot of effort and synchronization, uh, in the region to do that. I just wanted to have you all prepped with that information. Should you get questions, or have you have further concerns, uh, I, you're welcome to come in with me, my staff. Troy will be involved in the consultation. Should we get a red flag law order, it'll come directly to me. Um, uh, and then I'll sit down with my staff, and we're gonna figure out the best way to do it. Um, the last thing I'll just highlight is we're gonna be at, uh, Pasco County Health, is gonna do a very, very large, uh, suicide task force. Um, they looked at a lot of military communities that have a far less density than we do. Uh, we have a very high military density, and there was no comprehensive suicide task force. So this Friday, we're gonna attend their first meeting. Uh, I was very honored to be asked to do some of the opening comments from that. It's a very passionate topic. I think, uh, first responders, Todd would know, uh, military personnel, uh, obviously, uh, with 22 a day in our region, and uh, I think there's gonna be about 600 folks this Friday that attend that, that really want to make an effort on suicide, uh, to include children, uh, in our region, because it's very high. Um, so that's good. There's a lot of people there, there's a lot of energy behind it, so I feel very fortunate for that. Um, welcome back, Godspeed. Let's have a good 2020, thank you.
All right, um, John? Okay, uh, Ms. Williams, anything else? Ms. Martinez?
I spoke enough today.
Okay. It's been, it's been kind of your show lately. It's, it's, uh- Yeah. Uh, anything from IT? You guys good? Wonderful. Um, just kind of get it on the radar, uh, the 18th of February, 18th, um, we're looking at, is that right? Okay, no one's even responding. The 18th of February, I think we're looking at doing a workshop for broadband. Um, so, uh, it'll be here. Okay, all the discussions, or the discussions could be all around the different options, and, and how we want to possibly move forward with it, so, uh- Okay, I did want to mention that, um, uh, both our senior city clerk, uh, Ms. Huffman, and our city attorney, which I think probably why he felt like he had a little bit more latitude tonight. It's both their birthday today, so, um, uh, supposedly she's watching on YouTube, which I don't, uh, I don't buy for a minute, but, uh, I just want to wish them a happy birthday, and, and and thanks, everything that you guys do for, for our city, and, and we're glad that you're here, um, especially on your birthday, so sorry. Um, uh, with that, I'll start with Ms. Dean, uh, Ms. Duncan, anything?
I'm just super excited. I want to re- reiterate our Martin Luther King Jr. program on this Monday at 1 o'clock, 1:30, 1:30, 2:30. We don't plan to keep you here all day. Um, it's gonna be at the Fountain YMCA, uh, 326 West Alabama Avenue, right here in Fountain. Uh, a special shout-out to our sponsors, uh, the YMCA and the Pike's Peak Diversity Council, and GM Flowers with our Fountain Valley Chamber of Commerce.
Just to clarify, the time, one or one, what, what is the time?
It's 1:30 to 2:30.
1:30 to 2:30, at the Y, though?
Mm-hmm. 326 West Alabama Avenue.
The Y's taking that over.
Oh, the new Y, okay, the new Y, but thank you for-
The DFAC Fountain Valley YMCA.
And I would've been in the wrong place, and-
Yeah, DFAC stands for Dean Flesch Hour.
I know, D, I'm familiar with DFAC, yeah, but when she said Y, my brain went over to-
Oh, yeah, no, I'm just saying that for everybody else. Okay, uh, Mr. Geek, anything?
There's, I went to a meeting last night, as far as the recreation center's concerned, and they're in the process of getting a right move on, see?
Yes.
And so donations can start coming in for preparation.
Okay, yeah.
So, that's get, that's moving forward, the recreation center and the donations and all that stuff is in the process.
Okay, all right, thanks. Uh, Ms. Applegate?
Not right now.
Ms. Estes, anything? Airport Tim?
Nothing from me.
Uh, Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, I think I misspoke and said, "If you're upset about the new sign law, contact me." No, contact them. I just-
It'll be a short conversation. I, it's just, it's, it's too, too much. And it's not limiting free speech.
I don't have a problem, call, call me.
Yeah, you can call me. It's, it's, it's not limiting free speech, it's, uh-
You want it changed, call me.
Anyway, uh, I have nothing tonight. Uh, our next meeting will be January 28th. Um, we are adjourned.